Good afternoon. Welcome to the Apopka Planning and Meeting. Planning, Meeting, Commission, Commission Meeting, I'll be all right. March 12th of 2024. If you would please stand for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone here from the public has something they'd like to speak on in front of the commission that is not on the agenda this evening? Now would be the time to do that. Righty. Move right into the approval of the meeting minutes from February 13th, 2024. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from February 13th, 2024.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Mott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a presentation and a site plan tonight, and on your agenda, it is reversed. So item number one we're going to do is the 451 Commerce Park Platte. Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening. Jean Sanchez for Bobby Howell with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the 451 Commerce Park Platte. The subject property is located at 550 and 650 Marshall Lake Road on the southeast corner of Marshall Lake and State Road 451. It's approximately 22 acres in size. The platte has been submitted for consideration of creating two lots for warehouse development. Lot one is 13 acres and lot two is about eight acres. This plot also dedicates cross-access easement, water easement, enforcement easement, and infiltration pond easement. Access is posed via Marshall Lake Road. It is consistent with the major development plan approved by City Council on August 3rd, 2022, and the construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on January 4th, 2023. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the platte. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. You wouldn't have questions with staff? Do they have to get here or do they have a presentation?
No, sir.
Bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the 451 Commerce Platte, Commerce Park Platte.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Commissioner, just want to remind you all to take public comment.
Does anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. I need a second for Commissioner Stanley's motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. Sir, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Presentation of the transportation element.
I'm gonna let my consultants, because they make a lot of money, and the more I can get them, faster I can get them in here and out of here, the less money it costs me. What I wanted to tell you was, we're adopting a new transportation element. Ours is really old, as you know. And what we're doing today is, we're going through the plan with you. I sent it out to you and asked you to look at it so that we could discuss it. Your role in this is to make a recommendation to council to transmit it to DEO for approval. And that will happen next month. So we just wanted to have, almost like a work session with y'all to answer any questions and see what we missed, see if we're on target, you know, whatever y'all want to talk about. So that when we come next month for transmission, it'll be a much shorter and easier meeting. I'd like to introduce Mike Woodward with Kim Lee Horn. He's gonna start. Evan Magley, also, he works with Kim Lee Horn too. He's gonna do part of it. And I'm gonna sit there and, just sit there.
All right. Thanks, Pam. So yeah, the transportation element. And the reason we've got this broken up into two sides is, the first part's data and analysis, which I'm gonna cover, and then the policy stuff is what Evan's gonna cover. He's a planner, I'm an engineer, so that's a pretty, pretty nice dividing line for something like this. As Pam mentioned, we're here today, we're gonna be back next month. In that month's time, it'll, it'll give you the ability to kind of digest some of this and provide some comments that we'll use. There's also some, some public involvement that's gonna be open. And at next month's meeting, we will ask for your recommendation for the city council to transmit this to. Now it's called Department of Commerce, used to be DEO, before that it was DCA. So name change is new this year for that department. After this, and that's, that's what's kind of the third bullet here, is the transmittal at, transmittal hearing at City Council, which is tentatively scheduled for April 17th. Feel pretty good that we'll be able to make that. After that, the Department of Commerce has 30 days to review. And after that point, we will take it back to City Council. Depending on what the comments are, if there's no comments, we'll be able to go pretty quick. If there is some time to work through some things, it'll take a little bit longer. So here we go. The transportation element, we started by collecting and analyzing data, all right? Our existing conditions was year 2022. That's when the traffic counts were available, were required to, to go out into the future. And so we looked at years 2034 and year 2050. So by having those two timeframes, it gives us sort of a midterm and a long-term horizon. We do have new goals, objectives, and policies that Evan will talk about. We've, we've broken it into three to really kind of, kind of keep it organized and a little bit, little bit more clear which, or which portion we're talking about. The first one is about multimodal transportation systems. That's a, a term that's been around for what feels like a long time now, but during the, the previous, previous transportation element, it was fairly new. So definitely more, more on that later. The second is on transportation infrastructure. Where, where are we gonna invest, or most of our, most of our funds related to transportation? And the third is, where does some of that funding come from? What is it, how does a capital improvement plan relate to this? We do want some input from you. We've, I mentioned the public, we've got a little bit more discussion about that later. So why are we here? Pam alluded to it, it's been a long time. It was 2009, so that's a long time ago between updates. All the elements are currently being updated, right? We're gonna focus on transportation. Per statute, the horizon is 10 years. The previous one looks out to your 2030, so we've got to go beyond that. Also, since 2009, you've had a little bit of growth. You've seen some changes in your city. And so let's, let's adjust for those and make sure that we're prepared for what's here now and also looking towards the future. So what do the existing conditions look like? And here on the right side of the screen, you can see a map of the jurisdiction where the city, city roads are in red, and then the, the roads in black are either state or county. It was important for this map to just differentiate between city and not city, right? Whether they're county or state, that, of course, we, we would handle them differently. There's different rules and standards and whatnot, but the point is, red are city roads, black roads are not. And we also looked at access management, a number of other criterias. There's, there's a bunch of different maps in there that provide different types of information depending on what you're looking for. Regardless of jurisdiction, this is an important point, the city can establish the level of service standard for all roads within the city. Again, it doesn't, if it's a DOT road, a county road, the city has the responsibility of establishing the standard. So that's determining at what point you consider a road to be operating acceptably or failing. Context classification, that's new since 2009. And that does affect things like capacity or level of service or where you draw that threshold. It also affects some of the roadway standards like lane widths, target speeds, et cetera. Some bicycle and pedestrian standards are, are also, they vary depending on the context classification. What we used was consistent with the state guidelines for breaking them between the different, different criteria, and most roadways in the city fall within the, the ones that are listed here. One of the main points is that we should treat US 441 different, right out front than we treat it far away where it's more rural, right? We, we shouldn't apply the same standards to the road. We need to, it couldn't be the same road, same number of lanes. We should treat it differently depending on what's around it. So again, most of the, most of your roads are gonna be suburban residential, suburban commercial, but then in the downtown area, you get into kind of urban general and urban, urban center. So it's interesting that you have such a variety. Like a lot of cities, you'll have a, a much narrower definition of roads, but because of Popka goes from rural to urban all within a city, that's, it's a little bit interesting, and at least I think so. A little bit more about level of service, there's six letter grades, A through F. It's not like school, right? In school, you want As. If you have As in transportation, that means you spent way too much money on your roads. This is, this is to be measured during, typically, you get in the most detail during peak hour, right? And it's about, how does it feel? Does it feel comfortable? If you're able to just change lanes without checking in your rearview mirror, that might be level of service A. It's also pretty dangerous. You don't, you don't want your roads to be able to function that way during the peak hour. Again, there's just not enough asphalt in the world to, to have that happen. So what you really want to aim for is something like D or E. And, and again, this is on the, conditions from the traveler's perspective where E is pretty much, that's, that's as much as you're gonna tolerate. Now, one thing that level of service doesn't account for is sort of what happens after that? Like you, once, you know, spoiler alert, once we project out to year 2050, there's gonna be some roads that are failing. And once you get to E, there's no E plus, or E minus, or, or any kind of extra designation, it's just E. So at that point, at some point, the city's gonna have to look at something other than just level of service. And one metric that I'd advise to consider is duration of congestion. So you know it's gonna be broken, you know it's gonna be congested during the peak hour. So how long does that last? Is that 15 minutes where it's bad, or is it, is it bad for two hours of the day, right? And the more time goes by, the more urban situ, a, a, a locate, an area is, the more time it's gonna be over, over capacity. All right, there we go. Also, the final bullet point here is that most roads are gonna be designated as constrained at some point. It's not in anyone's best interest really anywhere to continue just widening further and further and further. If we had a 10-lane road, that would be catastrophic to the community. So, so many of the roads where there is some widening, once you get to four lanes, there's, there's not a whole lot past that. So the maps do show which roads are constrained, and we've got more details in there if you're concerned about a, a particular road. All right, so what's it like right now? Believe it or not, all roadways are operating acceptably. Some of them are pretty close, some of them are really close, but just under that peak hour threshold for, for level of service E. So right now, this, in, this, this map here shows whether they're D, E, and F. You can see there's no red right now. Again, this is based on 2022. If you've, I know there's been some growth since then, I wouldn't be surprised if we went out and measured today if a couple of these roads would trip that threshold. All right, so future, what, what's it gonna look like by 2034? And we use typical industry standard methods to forecast traffic out to year 2034 and then 2050. But I want to talk about some improvements that, that the city's already recognized are gonna be necessary and is working towards now. So some of them are in that kind of Kelly Park interchange area, for example, Sadler Road, where it would, it would extend to have, connect Golden Gem over to Plymouth-Sorrento. And then Effie Drive will extend south from Kelly Park down to Sadler Road. There's some widening projects, Okoye-Popka Road from Keene up to 13th Street from two to four lanes, and then widening Kelly Park Road from Waypoint Boulevard, which is, it's gonna be a new road that'll be west of Golden Gem, and then take that over to Plymouth-Sorrento. So that widening is from two lanes to four lanes. It's under design right now. 2034 level of service, all roadways are projected to operate acceptably except for State Road 436 for a portion from PiMont-Wakiva over to the Seminole County line, and then US 441 in four different areas shown on the map here. I won't, I won't read them, the map is a little bit easier to look at. County Road 435 from Sandpiper to Votah, and then Welch Road, and I've got this highlighted, that's, Welch Road is the only city road. All the other roads are, are state or county. Welch Road from Rock Springs Road to Creek Line Road is highlighted, keep that in mind, but also anticipated to be overcapacity from Creek Line to Wakiva Springs. All right, so what improvements? I just mentioned Welch Road, that's on here again, from Rock Springs to Wakiva. So city's out ahead of it, plans, plans on widening that road by, by 2050. Some of the other ones include extending Golden Gem Road from Kelly Park up to Andich, and several other widening projects as shown in the map here. 2050 of level of service, now we're seeing more red, right? I promised, promised you some red, here it is. Several roads, 436, US 441, County Road, County Road, Okoye-Popka Road, Wakiva Springs Road, and Binion Road. Then there's Kelly Park Road from Waypoint to Plymouth-Sorrento. Even though that's gonna get widened, by the time you get out to 2050, it's gonna be congested again. So that's what I was talking about, like now, level of service might not be the best metric to use, cause it doesn't go past E. So at that point, we should be talking about like, well, how many hours of the day is it congested? That would be an appropriate measure to consider at that point in time. I also say that, I will also say that year 2050 is a long way away. It's hard to be exact about when these, these things are gonna happen. We use the best methods that we can, but ultimately, we're still just sort of forecasting how much growth is going to occur, and that is affected by a lot of different, a lot of different things. So whether this, whether it looks like this in year 2045 or 2055, I can't tell you, but this is our, our, you know, the results of the analysis using those industry standard methods. So where does the city plan to invest a lot of its infrastructure? And one thing is intersection improvements. So a lot of these improvements are going to be via city, or via partnerships with developers or with the county or with the state. And the goal of these is to maximize efficiency without needing to widen the road. So these will improve operations, remove bottlenecks without needing to widen. So again, at this point, your goal should be really efficiency, like not, let's not have it, a lot of capacity at one location and then none at the next, let's have it so that it functions about the same at most locations. All right, now I'm gonna turn it over to Evan Magley. He's a certified planner to talk through some of the GOPs.
Thanks, Mike. As Mike mentioned at the beginning, we have three new goals. They've been reorganized to be a little bit easier to understand. The goals, objectives, and policies were rewritten to reflect the traffic analysis that Mike kind of gave you just a, an overview of. They've been streamlined and reorganized. Some language that we think might be better suited to the land development code was pulled out, and multimodal transportation and safety were a big focus. Speaking of safety, it's incorporated to, into almost every goal, objective, and policy. A lot of context-sensitive measures like traffic calming and lowering target speeds were included. Consistency with Vision Zero and Target Zero, what's the difference? Target Zero is just FDOT's take on Vision Zero. Both of them have the goal of eliminating serious injuries and fatalities, and again, emphasis on safety and vulnerable users. For multimodal transportation, the goal is to increase the use of other modes of transportation. It's not going to eliminate the congestion that Mike showed you, but it will provide another option. And then it will allow people who can't drive cars an option to get around. Trails, the goal, what trails is to expand the trail network and make it feel more comfortable, are providing amenities like shading and stops every so often, and improve safety. I also want to point out that the city has a pretty cool policy already where multi-use trails are required adjacent to new development. Since the last update, there's been a lot of changes in the transportation world. You think about Amazon deliveries, Uber, Uber Eats, these kinds of things, scooters. So we wanted to prepare the city to handle these changes as, as they progress. And these are some of the partners that the city will be coordinating with in the future. There might be other partners as well, but these are some of the, the partners that the city has been successful in partnering with. And I will turn it back over to Mike.
Thanks. This is just a reiteration of where we started, just to bring up the point again that we'll be back next month. We can have some questions today after this, but next month, we'll be asking for your recommendation for council to transmit to the Department of Commerce. Public input, we created a virtual room that looks sort of like a, a regular public involvement meeting that has like a QR code you can scan, and we brought some paperwork to kind of distribute this. And this is something we can, we can kind of post to a number of different places to try to get that public input, but there's a little sign-in sheet and a place to put comments, and then all of the maps that are in the plan, as well as the text for, for all the goals, objectives, and policies can be found through this virtual public meeting room. All right, so let's wrap it up. Transportation, most of the future deficiencies are anticipated to be on state or county roadways. Many intersection improvements are planned. The GOPs are broken up to, into three groups that emphasize safety, multimodal transportation and complete streets prepares the city for technologies, and we're pretty heavy on inter-agency coordination, right? Since most of those roads are, that are gonna be overcapacity are on state and county roads, we gotta be prepared to, to talk to them. Also, just partnerships for funding are gonna be important. There are several funding sources out there that are grants-related, so the city will have to advocate for those projects, get the grants, and then administer the projects accordingly. And the public input process is just starting now, we'll have the next month to, to gather input. Content information, there's Pam and myself, and that's all we had.
Thank you, sir. I know this answer, but I'm gonna ask anyways. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Doomey.
Okay. Great. First, I want to say it's a pleasure to be back here with you all. Sorry, the last two months I was deployed with the Florida State Guard. We missed you. So I wasn't here, but I'm glad to be back tonight. So let's talk about this plan. I'm sorry. Meetings were all a little shorter when I was gone, right? Okay. So let's talk about this. So I'm talking about the policy side. First of all, I appreciated it, the way you guys presented this, but policy 1.4.5, okay? Reduce vehicle dependence, promote non-vehicular travel. I, I don't think the reduce vehicle dependence is something that we should have in this plan. If you guys, if, if that's, that's, I know that's a policy thing, but I'm here to work for the, the city council on the residents of Apopka, and I don't want to reduce vehicle dependence for people that don't want that to happen. Okay? If we want to increase public transportation, that's fine, but that's a little different to me than reduce vehicle dependence, which also goes down to policy 1.5.1, which is develop a multimodal transportation system that reduces reliance upon single occupancy vehicles. This concerns me. This is the kind of stuff I expect here at DC, not in Apopka, reducing single occupancy vehicles.
Yeah, so I think we could probably just change the language, cause our intention was not to, like, I'm not trying to force anybody out of their car, it's to provide more options. Recognizing that the cost of widening a road to six, six lanes is probably gonna be prohibitive due to the right-of-way impacts. So it's like, what else can we do? What can fit? And, and what could we, what could we try to build to provide more options? So I think that's a valid point, we can look at that language because it, it sounds a little prescriptive when the intention was to be, to have more choices.
And I believe that based on the, the presentation you all just gave, but I would certainly recommend fixing that language. Moving on to section 1.8. 1.8.3, seek opportunities for multi-use trails to connect schools, neighborhoods, parks, greenways, et cetera. That's great, I love that. And 1.8.4, include the construction of sidewalks and bike accommodations. I think that's probably something better addressed in the land development code, 1.8.4, specifically because I know there is a part of the LDC whenever you have a zoning reclassification or use, change of occupancy or usage, I mean, you have to put.
If I may, let me point something out real quick. This is the comprehensive plan which the land development code is based on.
Based on this?
So you have to start here to get it to the land development code.
Okay. Well, let me finish my point, but I like that. So, but the thing is, go down to Alabama Road, the corner of Apopka Boulevard and Alabama Road, there's a sidewalk that goes into a telephone pole. That makes no sense, because it, it terminates right there. You know which one I'm talking about, Mr.?
That, that's actually in Orange County, unincorporated.
Well, whatever. But that's, that's the kind, it looks incongruent, and it just doesn't look right.
Yeah, there's a few of those downtown, actually.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, whenever I was talking about doing something down the road here, I was gonna have to put a sidewalk that went to nowhere. You know, that's the kind of stuff that I would like to see eliminated if possible.
Yep.
So that's the only comments I had. Thank you.
I have a question that's relevant to Commissioner Doomey's question. The multimodal element of that, what has, historically, what's been the success with that? In other words, if you provide the option, how many people are, are gonna revert from an automobile or convert from an automobile to riding their bike or a scooter? And, and you know, I understand if we were a college town, there's a bunch of kids running around, but I just, my thoughts are that the adults aren't gonna give up their car no matter what, no matter what kind of trail you made, unless it got them to work 20 minutes faster, they're still not gonna pedal a bicycle. So I'm just curious, i- is that successful in an environment like this? Does it make any difference? Is there any measurable, tangible difference from doing the multimodal or adding the, the bike paths or things like that?
Yeah, so I'm not aware of any new data that's come out, but looking, I was trying to answer this question a little while back and just couldn't find specific information. And a part of your question, I love it because you were saying like, in an area like this, right? The area where you implement this stuff's gonna matter. You mentioned like a college town or anyplace where there's density, then you'll have more people using it. The more spread out you are, the fewer people are, are gonna use that type of system, especially for, for getting to work. Now, it's, I, I would also advise against kind of saying whether something was successful or not by measuring how many people like get out of your car and, and switch over. There's gonna be some people who are trying to use these facilities now, and it's kind of dangerous to ride your bike in the road, or it's kind of dangerous to ride your bike in the sidewalk, it's just not the right speed for, for either one. Some people are riding their bike to work, not, not necessarily by choice, but sometimes that's the only means they have, or maybe lost your license, but I, I wouldn't want to say that a, a facility's successful or not based on like the percentage of people that are, that are using it. If you got a population that could use it and you build stuff like that, some people will. What that number is, hard to say. Again, I haven't, I haven't seen any new data to, to give me an actual number to give you that, that's defensible.
I, I would, again, if, if we're, you know, we're downtown Chicago, yes, I understand that here, I just don't see, and, and tailoring a road or, or working with a road to, to, to make a multimodal path or whatever you would do, just doesn't seem like something that will make any sense here. You know, we have a trail that people marginally use, bicycles, they're not gonna be on the sidewalk. the sidewalk, they're going to be on traffic like they always have been, and I've had actually employees that lost their license for whatever reason, they don't ride a bike to work, they ride their bike to the bus stop, and then they ride the bus to work. So I just, and I'm not, it just gives me the appearance of, oh, you know, we're working on multimodal, because it sounds good and it's a nice thing, but I don't see how that could be applicable here and what difference it could possibly make in the traffic, because, you know, Joe Blow going to work in Lake County or going in Orlando is not riding his bicycle, he's going to get in the car, and the traffic issues that we have now are not going to be alleviated, and in my opinion, wouldn't even put a dent in it. It's just something that we're, I think we're spending money on something that's completely irrelevant. If you're, you know, a trail around a neighborhood, yeah, but something anywhere out here on one of the main thoroughfares or anywhere that we're expending money on it, I just don't see it.
Could I give you a different perspective to look at that?
Okay.
So if you look at downtown Apopka, and you know where the West Orange Trail is, if you take the West Orange Trail north when it gets finished, you could get on the Wakava Trail, and that'll take you all the way out to the east coast. If you go south, you'll get on the coast-to-coast, and on the trail, you can go, well, literally coast-to-coast, and Apopka sits right in the middle of that. So with regard to developing a trail network, I don't necessarily think of it as for every foot of trail, we take a car off the road. I see it as a big economic development tool, because we're sitting right in the middle of all this, you come to downtown Apopka, you can go out to the Wildlife Drive. It's a big selling point, it's a big amenity for all these people that are coming in.
And not to interrupt, but I don't mean, I'm not talking about the, I agree with the trails, and people use the trails for their intended purpose. People don't take the trails to work, people don't take the trails to go to the store. They take the trails for, like you said, it's recreation, they'll load their bikes up and go and ride the trail from one and the other. I'm talking about multimodal, where you're discussing making lanes for bikes or scooters or stuff like that, not the trail system. I think that was two separate issues on the presentation the other gentleman gave us.
Yeah, and just a couple, couple things there, like, we're, we're not standing in front of you telling you that if you, if you add some bike lanes that you won't have congestion, like, you're gonna have congestion. That's, that's, that's not something that we're gonna argue, and most people in Florida are going, are gonna be driving. Like, everywhere in Florida, that's just gonna be the case. It's hot, cars are comfortable, I don't think that's gonna change anytime soon. Again, this is about providing alternatives, and if we're talking about like investing some money for people to have choices, and some people will use it, right? Like, it's hard to imagine, sometimes it's hard to imagine yourself using it, but there are people that use these facilities almost, pretty much wherever you build them. But the overall cost to do something like this is oftentimes significantly less than the cost of widening a road, because, well, every multimodal project I've worked on does not require right-of-way. So if you're doing something like that, you can do it within the footprint, you're not acquiring property, and the cost is relatively low while providing an option. And, and again, I agree with you. I don't, I don't think anybody's under the impression that this is gonna, is gonna make it so that it's easier to drive, or there's, like, you'll be the only one on the road behind the wheel. That's, that's definitely going to be the predominant mode of travel throughout Florida.
Okay, thank you.
If it's in our comp plan, we are more likely to get grant money, and we're also able to, say somebody's doing a new development, we're doing it right now, we can impose on them to build a segment of a trail or anything else related. So a part of it is so that we don't have to pay for some of these things too, we can either get money or have someone else spend their money.
Yeah, I'm Matt, I'd like to add to that just a little bit. Grant money, there's, there's a decent amount of grant money right now focused on safety, and there is a, kind of a nationwide push towards safety. We mentioned Target Zero or Vision Zero, which is to reduce fatalities and severe injuries from crashes. A lot of the money is going to be focused on locations that can, that can try to address vulnerable users. So vulnerable users would be bicyclists, pedestrians, motorcyclists. So if you have a project that can reduce crashes for those types of users, then you're more likely to get funding from the federal government that then will, will significantly reduce the overall cost of the locality to implement some of these, some of these improvements.
All right, thank you. All right, any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have three, three questions, and I can ask all three. When you refer to the level of service, and you say that the city is responsible for that level of service that that road provides, am I saying that correctly?
I, I might have misspoken. My point was that you get to choose which grade is acceptable, right? Like, you're, you're not, you're not, no one's gonna look at you and say like, hey, you said this was supposed to be Level of Service D, and it's E, so now you're in trouble. That's, that's not what's gonna happen. My point was, you get to choose whether D or E is acceptable.
But, okay, so then if we choose Level D as being the highest, you know, level that we want to, to go being acceptable, obviously we have roads that are currently county and currently, and probably will forever be state, the county might not be that in 2050. How, how do we impress upon both of those entities to create improvements to those to try and at least address and maintain? Okay? That's, that's one question. You mentioned when you, you used the word constrained. My question is, what improvements can be made when you're at the constrained, you know, terminology? And then my last question, you mentioned, kind of in progression, once you get to a certain point, then you start a discussion about congestion and the hours of congestion. My question is, is that just discussion? We have a great philosophical, intellectual conversation, and we check the box that we've had that, or what ability do we have to make improvements now that we know will be an issue in 2050 before 2050? And when I say before, I mean 10 to 15 years before 2050.
So, I'll start with the easy one, the second one, definition of constrained. Okay? That pretty much means that we're not going to add through lanes. If, if there's two lanes per direction, it's a four-lane road, we're not going to make it a six-lane road. Or if it's six, we're not going to make it eight, so it's constrained. So you could do things within that space, and it's hard to answer exactly what, because it's going to be case-by-case, road-by-road. How much space do we have? How wide are the lanes? How wide's the median? How wide is the space from the edge of pavement to, to the sidewalk and then over to the right-of-way? So all those things will, will factor into what the options are, and it's really difficult to say without looking at a specific road, but that is my favorite type of project, is looking at a road and figuring out, okay, what do we do with this?
And then my question would be, my, a follow-up question would be, in your study that you've done in the past and present and future, does that incorporate potential one-way roads that used to be two-way, but now this is one-way and this is one-way?
It's, it's something that could happen. That's something, that's a, that type of change is, is a big change, and it's something that you would want to spend a lot of time vetting and involving, involving the people who live there, the businesses that are there, the residents that are immediately adjacent or would otherwise be affected. But that, that's a big, big change that we would not, I mean, would not go about lightly. It's something that, like, there's nothing saying that it's, there's actually, there is a, there is a policy saying that it could be considered. So it's, it's something that's on the table, but again, that's a big change.
I'm not suggesting it would be easy, and I'm not suggesting that anyone would take that lightly.
Certainly.
But when you're sitting there saying it's, it's four-lane, we're not going to six, we're not going to eight, and you have the word congestion, you have the word, you know, at, at what point do you sit down and say, we have reached our max capacity of X, and we really, really seriously need to look at, you know, Y and Z as a possibility beyond 2050?
There are two kinds of roadway constraints. There are political constraints, where y'all just say, not doing it, and then there's physical constraints, where the cost of it would, it doesn't make any sense anymore. You know, you take out city blocks. And I'm gonna give you an example of what you're talking about, or I think. We've got US 441 running through the middle of downtown, it's Main Street. Okay? It is what it is. But there are a lot of things that have been tossed around about that, and you know already that people are trying to bypass downtown. Some of them go up on Monroe, some of them go on Sixth Street, I don't know if you noticed, out here by, from the fire department, we striped a big old crosswalk because the firefighters were scared to cross the street, because people were cutting through there and just zipping by. So we're gonna fix that. But part of that too, because the comp plan's gonna let us do it, is to study areas to look at, at those kind of improvements. So we have a beautiful grid system in parts of the city where things like that would work. I have a consultant about to go under contract to look at the, kind of the Station Street, the CRA area, to look at those kind of improvements, because there are just some places where what we have for right-of-way is, is what we have. And, or it's a place where we don't really care if people are not in gridlock, but they're not going fast, we want it to be, you know, a better kind of downtown, where people come to events and feel comfortable walking.
Well, and, and one other thing, Pam and I, I've watched this, and especially watch it during Hurricane, when generally the state at times will remove all tolls. And for example, when the tolls are removed, the traffic on 429 increases dramatically, Boy Scout traffic reduces dramatically, Acquah Apopka reduces dramatically. I have a friend that will not pay the toll to go to, to the Winter Garden when it's essentially 75 cents, and will sit in two-lane traffic, you know, potentially building four-lane, et cetera. So I wonder sometimes, you know, and I appreciate that you showed a slide that had, you know, CFX as one of the, you know, entities, but I look at some areas, and somebody could go, well, that'd be everything, but like from 441 down to the Turnpike. I sit and I go, wow, what would this be like if there wasn't a toll to the secondary roads? And the, the traffic that's on secondary roads? Plymouth-Sorento Road? Once everything gets going up there at Kelly Park, I'm sitting there going, boy, if the on-ramp at Kelly Park all the way down to 441, all the way down to Maitland Boulevard, did not have tolls there, and I think there would be one, two tolls if I remember correctly. The amount of traffic that would then use that, which is built for, you said, A or B level, speed, excuse me, as, instead of D or E, I, I, I think of that often as a possibility. You know, that's another heavy haul to get people to agree to that type of thing.
Yeah, I, I've never, never studied that, so I can't really have an opinion on how much traffic, like, I see your point, but...
Anecdotally watching, going, wow, this is amazing, you know?
Probably a lot. I can, I can tell you that over time, like, even the toll roads get filled up, people, people driving on the 408 have got to be ridiculously frustrated that they're paying to sit in bumper-to-bumper traffic on the way to work and home in the downtown area. But again, I've not studied that, I could, I could only guess, and I don't, I don't know how valuable that's gonna be for you. But I did, your third, your third question, oh gosh, I had something for you. What was your third question?
Well, when you talk about congestion and you discuss...
Oh, yeah, yeah, is it academic, right? Is it just a, is it just a discussion? So there's a lot of reasons why you might prioritize funding towards one facility or another. Something like the amount of congestion is, is one of the metrics. Depending on where you are, what, what else matters to that road, it might be the most important one, or it might be one among many. So my point wasn't that we would, we would change our decision-making process for which roads to prioritize, it was just that we might have to change how we measure this. Point being, if you have two roads that are otherwise identical, one has more cars that are struggling to get through, maybe you should focus on that one instead. And just the system we're using now is going to become obsolete at some point in time.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Mr. Washington?
Yeah, this is just minor. We know that we have an extensive trail system through central Florida, which is marvelous. And obviously, people who are riding bicycles or walking take advantage of it, that's super. You, in the presentation, you made mention of a multi-use trail. Is that different from what exists now?
I, like, I'm, I'm more guilty than most people of throwing around different words to kind of mean the same thing. Yeah, if, if you want to get super wonky, there are differences in the specifics of the definitions. I, I've always taken a more practical approach to it, and, and just, you provide the best facility you can, wherever, wherever it can go, and what you call it doesn't, doesn't matter so much. So I apologize for, for throwing around a bunch of different terms, but certainly, depending on what's happening in the surrounding area, will dictate what type of specific facility you'll have and what the different elements of that facility would be like. How far is it away from the street? How wide is it? Well, how much space do you have to work with? Right? How much do you want to spend? So these, these types of things are gonna be important criteria for what it actually looks like. And because I've never been too much caught up in the definition of the different terms, I would do a poor job of describing the different ones, but like, there's, there's, I could tell you that a shared-use path has standards for, for design, whereas a wide sidewalk really does not. Well, it has, it has far fewer, far, far fewer standards. So sometimes names matter, and that'll affect obtaining funding sometimes, if, if there's certain pools of funds that are only for trails, and you're trying to build a wide sidewalk, you might not be eligible for that.
Thank you.
We might just change what we call it.
Or, if you change what you call, then there's those standards that apply of like, well, what's the, what's the distance? What's the, that's, a, a trail has a design speed of 18 miles per hour. Sidewalk, you should not be traveling at 18 miles per hour. So there's, there's differences sometimes depending on the names, but for the most part, want to keep it open to build the best facility for the specific location on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Mr. Stanley? Commissioner Ryan?
One question here. Wouldn't it relieve a lot of traffic at, on 429 if we could put an interchange on State Route 436, 435, I'm sorry?
In, in interchange with the 429?
No, on, on 4, 435, State, kind of wrote 435.
And which intersection, 435 and where else?
429.
And the 429. So adding new interchanges is always a, a, a pretty hefty undertaking with somebody like CFX. The spacing, I, I, do you have that? I'm not sure what the spacing is.
Actually, that...
I'll try to answer off the fly.
Actually, that interchange was there originally when they were under construction, and the state took it out, because it was not a, it was not part of the original plan to keep the, the, the access limited to the 429.
To keep the growth down, right? But it didn't work.
Correct, yep.
I think if they put the interchange back in there, it would reduce a lot of traffic.
It would probably reduce traffic, but when, as soon as you put an interchange, they, you want to develop it, and that area is still pretty rural. But, but that, that's something we don't have control over, but the state did take that out.
Yeah, but the problem is, people in, in north of Apopka, when they want to, want to go 429, they have to go to Kelly Park. Instead, it could just turn on 435 and save the traffic from Kelly Park. I mean, it's, because I know when I, when I go to Daytona, I have to go to Kelly Park Road to get on the interchange.
Yep.
435 is what's...
Rock Springs Road, Plymouth, Plymouth, Mount Plymouth Road, basically.
Mount Plymouth Road, okay.
No.
435?
435 is Park Avenue.
Rock Springs Road.
And then the state closed it down.
Maybe with 414.
It's now a closed road.
Yeah.
So certainly wherever you build an interchange, that becomes more accessible to people who are on, so any kind of an interstate or limited access system, so that will usually bring more traffic to the area. In the short term, like, it's great, in the long term, that, that area near the interchange becomes more, more congested, more congested than it otherwise would. it otherwise would.
Causes a lot more traffic than the Kelly Park and 429, and a lot more than there should be, you cut out a lot of traffic if you put, put that interchange in there.
That was a legislative decision.
Correct.
When our interchange went in, or when we were awarded an interchange, and it was decided that it was gonna be at Kelly Park Road and, um, the 429, we knew, and this goes back to the whole Akava legislation, it would take an act of, of the state legislature to put that back in, and there are a lot of people that have your way of thinking, but there's even more that, you know, there are gas that we even have on, so, when, when they put the one in at, at 435, it was with the understanding, it was a temporary interchange till they broke it.
Well, I think by 2050, they'll have a different attitude substantially.
Well, you know, and, and, and this plan is made to be amended, and if the state comes to us, or CFX comes to us and says, getting too much pressure, we're gonna put it in there, we will amend our plan in a heartbeat to include that and support their project.
And one more, one more question, um, do you think by 2050, most vehicles, if not all vehicles, will be self-driving vehicles?
I think so, yeah, by 2050, um, that's, that's quite a bit, like, 20-some years from now, um, I think, I, I'll keep, I'll hold on to an internal combustion engine that I can drive myself, but it'll be like a weekend vehicle, but, uh, kinda speculating, there's, there's projections that, like, there's, will have, there's a lot of things happening with, uh, like, automation and self-driving is already pretty strong, um, there's people in the industry of basically, uh, like, drone helicopters that'll be personal transport, and they're telling us that they're gonna be online by 2030, I don't exactly believe that, but my point being, if people are saying that they think they'll have, like, individual drone helicopters to, for medium-range trips, then, yeah, by 2050, it's gonna be autonomous vehicles for the most part.
So, how, how are we planning for that, or should we plan for that?
So, so, like, we're gonna update this every 10 years, right now, it's a little bit early to, to kinda focus on that, but, a lot of the, the vehicles now, as long as we have, like, they need, they need lane striping that's strong, right, that's more of a maintenance issue than it is a, a long-term vision issue, it's more of a, what are we doing day-to-day to make sure that the infrastructure is in place, that where all the cameras can pick up what's out there, and there's, like, that signage, that's pavement markings mostly, maybe some infrastructure in the ground, but, um, you know, other than being open to technology a- a- advances, which we are, um, we certainly don't wanna get prescriptive about, like, how this is gonna go, or if what I'm saying right now about pavement markings and signage becomes obsolete in 15 years because the technology finds a different way, so, for now, we're talking about being kinda open to technology, but there's not much that would make sense in the long-range plan to say how specifically we're gonna address one thing over another.
I just personally, I hope there is self-driving cars, because I don't wanna be that old and drive myself.
And we probably don't want you driving either, um, if you look at the, the comfort, the transportation element that we're placing, and you look at the projects that are in there, the, in 2009, were projects that we forecasted for now, they never happened, development didn't go that way, and so they're not needed projects, so, that's why, like Jim said, ever, or Mike said, every, we update about every, we're supposed to update every 10 years, we hope that we're on that, we're gonna be on that schedule now, you know, the crystal ball only looks out so far, it certainly, I have no delusions that what we've got here for 2050 are... Yeah, I mean, at some point, you just have to extrapolate things out and say, you know, we're kinda moving that way, but, uh, let's see, I'm not sure I'll be here in 2050, I'm not sure how much I'll care, but I do care about 2030 and 2040.
You're right, we'll all be dead, okay.
Some of the things that we see too, through our interactions with other groups related to, um, intelligent transportation systems, um, some of the things that we're talking about are going to be addressed by that, where adding capacity is not, um, there will be other ways to add capacity to roads without adding lanes, so, you know, and some of it is like here for me.
One thing would really help, if they add another, um, interchange on 429, that would really help, and you wouldn't have to widen the road so much on Kelly Park Road, and traffic would be a lot lower.
Okay.
'Cause I know everybody lives along Rock Springs Road, wants to go to Daytona, wants to go to Sanford, they gotta go down to Kelly Park Interchange, which is, you know, inefficient, and it's just gonna be more, I do that all the time, when I wanna go to Sanford or, or Daytona, I go to Kelly Park Interchange, I shouldn't do that, and when I come back, I have to do the same thing.
Perhaps a helicopter would be sufficient.
I saw a ride.
I can't wait that long.
I, I would get off Mount Plymouth and go up through, uh, Sorrento and get on there.
That's one two-lane road, that's not...
I'm not gonna go opposite direction.
All right, any more questions?
So, we'll see you, uh, next month to do the approval portion.
Now, is this available, can you print out a copy of this for anybody in the council who wants to take it?
I can, I'd be well. If I hadn't just marked all over this one, I wouldn't have given it to you, and the other thing that I didn't send out to you is what Mike mentioned at the beginning of his presentation, where you can go to our room, I'm, I'm sorry, and, and you can write comments on the plan, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to get people to go in there and sign in and look around and, and write comments, or you can just send, um, me or Mike an email with anything that you'd like to say about this, because we'd like to get it incorporated into the plan, but, um, I'll send, in an email, I'll send you the, um, the link to that room with, it's got the, um, QSR code on it too, and, and then you can just click on it and go there and, and, um, and see the plan, and I think you can mark things on maps, and, and I would say that if I could do it, it's pretty easy to do, so...
When we come back next month, the intention will be to just, uh, really quickly summarize what we talked about today, and then cover any changes that would, that have been made, and any comments that we've received, so, we're not gonna try to redo what we did today, it'll just be really quick, to pretty direct, covering the, the comments.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, do we have any old business?
I'm, I'm kind of an old person, so, um...
Not kinda, you are.
I think I am the oldest one in the room, but anyway, um, I just wanted to announce that I am retiring, uh, my last, uh, official day is, uh, the end of, the end of May, and, uh, so we, um, I've, I've been doing the planning thing for a little over 39 years and, in, in Apopka, working for Apopka for a little over 19 years, so, I've, uh, I've decided to go kayaking and scuba diving and do some woodwork and biking and a few other things at my leisure versus just confined to one weekend.
Well, good for you, Jim, good for you, congratulations.
But I wanna thank you all for your service here also, um, I know this is semi-thankless, except for, I thank you pretty much every time you come in, and I, I appreciate your time and your efforts, uh, going through this with, uh, with staff and with the, uh, the applicants that are keeping Apopka, uh, growing.
Great, great.
God bless you all.
All righty, do we have any new business? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.